I currently was called to be in order, please do you have a pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the love of the patriots.
Anderson. Bader Bur.
President.
Newby.
President.
Holstein.
President.
Yarris.
President.
Ravish.
Present.
Kuchar.
Present.
Seven.
Present.
Thank you. And thank everybody for coming and hopefully it was an exciting day and our first day of school here. Not too exciting, but I had enough of that, just the right amount here. Uh, any additions, additions, changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take item all off the consent agenda and maybe this item be on the non-consent.
Any other additions, additions, changes to the agenda? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's alright, we need them up in first, hold on.
We'll move to a per se agenda.
We'll move to a per se agenda.
Bader Bur and Yarris.
Let's try that again, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's. Motion carries, thank you. Any comments on the agenda items? I'd like to address the board, Ms. Palmaville.
I actually just really want to stress typically which is I can't get a local police officer today. And I got your name, free liberal after that last year. I mean, if you know, if you're too bad out or a rector officer. Today at school, he stopped to check, talk to her, see how this year was going. She went to her, made her city and asked, well, you please bring me out my picture. And he says, you've done so good this summer. First day at school, he's like, I'll give you your picture. That's what we want, we don't want someone who coming in every day, that these kids don't know that way. That is not every picture. That she worked so hard to get what she needed, that she could get around and do these jobs. It's really, which is really good, well, I'll connect with these kids now with what I was giving you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address? What started in Spencer?
Chief.
Aye.
Um.
Chief Terry Spencer.
I think I got one here.
I, in fact, I started here, I didn't wear glasses, so. I did want to just talk about contracts a little bit. And by all means, um, with any baskets, other than long portions, but I did want to express a couple things I have talked to, um, a couple of board members, so. Um, and I would ask that you would, uh, consider, uh, tabling this, um, until a different time. School started today and it was uneventful as far as the law enforcement cycles. Uh, we were here, um, and we will continue to be here no matter what this board decides to do. And I expressed that and, and I think that everybody knows that. I have a, uh, I, I've enjoyed my time since two thousand seven, American county and, and the school's always been really important part of our day to day assignment, so. Um, but I would ask that we hold off on that, um, and reflecting in some of the conversations I had with some of the board members and Mr. Balchak. I thought that we were still kind of in negotiations. I've been here since two thousand seven and as one board member has said, it went from a kind of a, uh, the school was kind of paying more of a donation to the police department, but it was here a long time for me and we've had, from my understanding, a good relationship and a good service. And it's went way beyond scope of, uh, you're paying me to be here from this time to this time. Um, it's included, you know, after school activities, uh, events that we've had in the community, um, from calls on Sunday night, uh, when we figure out something's going on with some kid the next day. And we've always been on it and, and we will always continue to be on it because that's part of being a good police department. Um, but in reviewing, uh, this contract, I just, you know, I would like to just mention a couple of things that you might want to take into consideration. And also is, is my other, part of my other life is I'm a supervisor of a township, that I have contract deputies. So I'm very familiar with reading these contracts and how they work. And in it, at the end of the day, if you decide to go with them, you're going to get a nice person, uh, by all means. But some things to consider, you know, twenty twenty-one, uh, our contracts that we were getting for deputies, uh, was approximately hundred and, I think it was a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, the price now for a full time, now granted that you're not, you're looking at a couple of months, not the summer. Um, but it went up to about a hundred fifteen thousand and they have a, uh, increase that you're going to get every year. If you read through that contract, there's also additional five percent, uh, charges that you get with that. Um, there's in no circumstances.
Oh, one more minute?
Yep.
Um, I would ask that when I get to that minute, maybe I could extend that because.
Two more minutes.
It's possible. Yep. Um, but when you, when we get to the point where we're talking about dollar for dollar, I would just say that I don't think there's any circumstances that you're going to beat how much our price is for how much an outside agency is. Um, the thing that we're looking at here, it's not a full time officer for this school. It's a full time officer for the district. Um, if I'm correct, and I've been wrong before, but that will start from Bay City. That person's going to start his job in Bay City, however they work it, whether they stop in Linwood at that time and then come to this school or come to the school and go back to Linwood, they're going to be back in Bay City at three thirty because that's the way it works. They have to get paid by someone. Um, you're going to, so realistically, for your full time district officer.
I make a motion, may I allow Mr. Spencer to have three more minutes?
With more good support.
All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, glad to talk with you. Um, but at the end of the day, what are you really going to get out of that time? If you're looking at having ten hours, which is a completely separate deal, but ten hours a week in Linwood, um, you're going to have a minimum of an hour drive a day for five days a week. Uh, we were providing a service for approximately twenty hours a week. You're maybe going to get five hours more a week, so you're probably going to get twenty-five hours a week, feet on the ground, if that's what you're looking to do. Depending on how you do it, so just something to consider. Um, they, uh, and also, you know, there's, there might be some other expenses as far as, you know, if an officer's got to take a complaint, they have to write a report. Um, we've talked about this before, we've been going back to our office to do our reports, uh, but some more of that paperwork has to be processed. Right now, unless they have an office like they have set up on the township, they'll have to do that at a location they have in services. So that's going to be an additional expense. Um, lastly, sorry about that. I would just like to mention that, you know, this contract doesn't include the things that we already do. It's not going to include the weekends, it's not going to include the, the games, it's not going to include the events. You don't have any choice in who you're getting. You're going to get a decent person, I'm not saying that, but it's based on seniority. So you're going to get whoever decides to do that. If an opening comes in a different township and they decide they want to move out, you're going to get somebody else. There's a level of trust that we have in this community because our officers know the people that are in this community. Um, and, you know, customer service, it's a big deal, uh, especially when you're in the police law enforcement business. Uh, we pride ourselves on knowing who these kids are in this community. We pride ourselves that we have people that come to us and tell us about things that are happening. I don't know if you're going to get that if you don't have somebody from the community. Um, my suggestion would be, one minute? My last thing that I would say, my suggestion would be is please consider tabling this and, and have some further discussions, whether it's a budget meeting, uh, with the city and Mr. Walcheck or however you want to do that. You're going to get a couple more hours if you go with a full time contract, you're going to pay more money. Um, if you're not going to have a full time person in this school, you're going to have a part time person. The whole reason we're talking about this is the biggest concern that we have in America, active shooters. Probably not going to happen if somebody's standing, I agree. So you gotta have a full time person if you're worried, but that's your concern. Otherwise, just have a part time person, that's the same service we're providing. Um, I would like to continue the covers locally, um, I would hope that you would take this consideration. And if you have any questions, please feel free to get me a phone call on that, I don't think most of you got my number, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address on the agenda items? Yes, Ms. Lincoln?
Hi, I'm, I'm Becky Liken and I'm the city manager for the county. I just kind of wanted to elaborate a little bit, um, on the contract, I've seen the contract, there's no figures, there's no numbers. I wanted to tell you what we're offering, we're offering twenty hours for forty-five thousand. We're offering full time forty hours, seventy-two thousand. Our hours are flexible, if you want forty hours, you got eight hours a day to do whatever you want. If you want it to be two to ten because you have a football game that night or you have, you want seven AM till three because you've got other activities coming in, we can do that, we can offer those things, we're two minutes away. Like Terry said, we're going to still be there anyway, our officer was here today, I mean, that's part of what we do. But I just think if I took this to my board and said, here, here's an open number, no number, it wouldn't go over very well. I think you guys need to have numbers, so I would like to sit down and negotiate. We didn't really get a chance to do that because it was, here's, here's our figures and that's it. So I would like to negotiate that, I think you're better, that is with us. So I, I hope you do consider tabling this or at least setting up different options for, um, sitting down to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Anybody else like to ask more on the agenda items? Thank you. Consent agenda, items A to K.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pay the bills at six hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Vote in support, any discussion? Roll call vote please. Bader Bur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Newby.
Yeah.
Holstein.
Yes.
Ravish.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Kuchar.
Yes.
Seven zero. Motion carries, thank you. Communication, Mr. Goldschmidt.
Thank you, Kuchar. Uh, I would first like to talk about the school resource officer contract, um, that is on the, um, agenda, non-consent agenda. Just a couple of things to go over, what was given to you, uh, with that contract. Um, the number of the total revenue at the end, seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars would be the top end of the contract if we went with the county. Um, you can see above that, the other finance uses, five thousand and sixty-six, that's the true cost that they talked about could come off if they don't wrap a car, if they don't move their gun, whatever it is, you know, as far as, which they said normally that all comes back to us, but they put that on there just in case something did happen. Um, so that's the number, seventy-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine for the forty hour, um, per week between Linwood and the Penny County campus. Um, I did call today because I did want to get some information on the travel. Um, and it was told that they do start at seven thirty at their, um, office for a quick briefing. And then would they suspect, um, mapping it out, they said it'd be around a twenty minute drive to Penny County or a ten minute drive to Linwood. So probably a half hour a day would come off of our time, I mean, that's an estimate, it, it probably could be between two and a half to or I don't know what that would be, would have, that's why it's kind of a pilot to see what that would be with travel. But that's what he said, each day there would be twenty minutes, um, of travel to Penny County or to Linwood would be ten.
But they don't start sort of the time that.
It is, well, they would leave and that's, they did say they would probably get to Penny County at seven fifty if they left at seven thirty at their office or they would get to Linwood at seven forty. Be done at three thirty, if they left Penny County, would have to be at three p.m., they would have to leave. And then from Linwood would be three twenty and they would have to leave to be back in time to be done in clock out. So that time does come off ours, which, you know, I would say would be two and a half hours a week, could be more if they're leaving from Penny County and going to Penny County. If Linwood wasn't in the picture, then it would be a little bit more. So that is, um, that is in there as well. Um, I think that's the only additional information I had on this.
Are you revising on stopping at Linwood every day, like coming to Penny County?
No, um, I think that, I did talk about that today also with the under sheriff and they said that that would be what you want. If you want to do something every day or if you want one day to stay in Linwood, do the whole day there, whatever you want, whatever works for us. Um, from Linwood to Penny County, they said they would be able to work that hour if we wanted to work those hours.
Is the officer going to be designated to respond to the new school principal?
She would be, yes. Ms. Tyney is, is the resource, yes, I think that would be where if we have programs, if we have things we want to do within the district, that would be the point of contact, yeah, that's what we had talked about. So there's, you know, that one person saying things that we need, we would like, what we could do. And then that would be who the officer is, you know, that, that's one of her positions, uh, for this, either way. Any other questions on this? Okay. Um, Google-based health center meeting, we can have a meeting after school today or at school, after the board meeting, um, and in here around six thirty. And that will be, um, again, we had a meeting earlier. Where we did talk about it in the spring, I think it might have been early summer, we had a meeting and we'll do the same thing where there is handouts, flyers for parents for any questions they may have to talk about this. And we are hoping to get this going in early twenty twenty-four, beginning of this year. And that depends on, um, some construction at the health center that they would need to adjust a few things with rooms. And that, uh, is looking to be grant funded as well, so that would not be, as long as that works, that would be, um, not on our tab. Any questions about the student-based health center? I know we've been hearing about it for a few meetings, so the information will not be reviewed. The safe entry, if you went out the library entry or exit, you can see that those doors are up, they worked on it last week. Um, did a lot of work and kind of sealed it in, now they're waiting for the extra parts, some of the mesh things, the, the grates to go in there. Uh, and hopefully we will be using that quickly where we can open up those doors between the library and those schools, they can go back and forth. Otherwise, they're locked and you can only get through at passing time. So if you have a chance to take a look at that, that's good. Uh, Northern Bay Community Foundation grants, the cycle is open right now, um, I have a lot of teachers that, that is open for grants. Um, so just want to get out there again publicly that those grants are available. They've helped us tremendously, um, over the past few years, um, for many years. And the, the last grant they helped pay for was the, the display screen that's going up in the gym lobby that's taking place of the old one that was over ten years old and kind of, it, it ran out of its life. Um, so that new one is coming in and all the class pictures will be on it, there'll be videos, there'll be, um, we're separating more groups, we're going to add, it's going to have a lot more um, usability to it than the old one. So Northern Bay did a great job of helping us with that. Uh, parent guidance and mental health services, this was approved last year and I just wanted to talk about it again of all the services that we have. Um, and it's a great service, we had some great comments with our surveys at the end of last year, all parents were happy that we had this available. Um, we have flyers that will be going up with all the services throughout the year. We have one-on-one coaching where parents can sign up and it's virtual, uh, where there are Zoom meetings, so anonymous from your own house. No one else knows, it's, um, all the HIPAA rules apply, so your name is not out there with anyone. Um, mental health topics covered in online anonymous Zoom sessions. And I do have the lineup for this year, I just wanted to read you quickly the, um, the topics that we'll be covering. Supporting your child's, child's mental health, emotional regulation, recognizing what's wrong, emotional regulation, uh, interrupting negative emotions, what parents need to know about suicide prevention, de-escalating cycles of conflict and substance use in the baby. So those will be throughout the year where parents can break from their own household, six thirty to seven P.M. And I get the Zoom meeting and they can register up, register for that, uh, and, and be involved with those, they're really good. And then the parent guidance also has the on-demand videos with hundreds of topics that parents can browse and say, that's something I need some help on and you click it and it's like a fifteen, twenty minute video with experts, uh, in that field, so. Want to make sure and get that out there and you'll see some more of those flyers up and around, uh, very shortly. Uh, soccer field, uh, I met with True Green today, um, Mr. Huber and I also went out there after. Um, I didn't know he was coming, but I, I seen his truck, so I went out there and we walked the field. It is filling in there, it, it is looking better and he did spray last week. Of course, it was the, about five hours before the big storm went through, but you can still see a lot of the wilting of some of the weeds that are out there. So it did, it did take, um, the plan moving forward right now is we do have some of those clumps of, it's grass, so the weed killer won't kill it. But it's a different type of grass and it's a big clump that we're planning on doing the roundup on those and killing that. So you'll see some brown patches where those are dead, uh, but he plans to, um, spray within the next few weeks with weed killer and fertilizer and then reseed it, what did he call it? He called it overseeding, to oversee the whole thing again, to get more grass growth in there, so. Uh, aeration also, he'll be aerating it as well, I know some people have talked about, um, um, rolling it and they've not unrolled it because it compacts the ground and the grass can't grow as much. So that's why aeration is what we're doing right now. Um, we had a great first day, um, things went smooth, which first days, uh, tend to go smooth, people are very excited to be here. But I did want to thank our custodians and maintenance crew and transportation, just getting everything ready over the summer. You know, when, when a lot of us are home doing our vacation things over the summer, they're here working to make this place look great and, and be ready. And it was, it was, uh, it was a great day, um, we were, we were excited, I did a visit at the kindergarten, uh, classrooms with their, their pilot program where they met today with parents, a lot of smiling faces for parents and students. Uh, Mr. Stanford's going to do a survey to see what they think about that process, if they liked it or if we'd like to want to go back to the old one, so. Any questions, but any of the stuff I did?
You didn't lose any kids today, I mean.
Oh, I'm glad you asked. We didn't lose any kids, um, these are just some of the numbers that we have, now this is from the count of last October to this time. So there may be some students that we have in here, I don't think this is actual bus and seats, it's registered as of right now. Um, but we have five in the diploma program versus what was eight last year. Linwood, one eleven, um, and it was one thirty, uh, last year's first count. Uh, the advancement academy, twenty-three to forty-six, but here's the thing with that, the GSRP students don't start for another two weeks, I think, something like that, we didn't have. So they have time still to come in and register, so that number will hopefully be right back out there around forty-six or more. Uh, central elementary, three eighty-five today and it was three sixty-one last year, so that's up twenty-four. The high school, three ninety-six to three eighty-seven last October, so that's up nine. Um, middle school, two eighty-six from two seventy-four last October, so that's up twelve. Um, and then we have our, we do get some FTEs for St. Lance as well and that's down from, uh, it was ninety-eight last year and it's at sixty-seven this year. But obviously that's some of those numbers that are up in our numbers, so I can get a say with that. Thank you for reminding me, Mr. Bader. I hope that's the way you're, you met while losing them, because we do have those.
Yeah, it wasn't really, I was wondering, maybe, something got lost.
Nope, that's, that's, that would think is great.
Do we have any staff opening yet?
We have a special education opening from a resignation last Wednesday. Um, that one, Dr. Brown is looking at options and what we can do because with most schools starting that, it's going to be a tough one to bill. We're going to keep trying, but, you know, have a backup plan in case we don't, how we make that work.
I'm going to fill in, is everything still?
Ooh, no, 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 I was thinking of teachers, um. Here with the GSRP.
One at Central, two at GSRP, two at Central. Uh, Cook at the high school, couple of bus driver positions and a white truck. So a lot of our skill over positions are.
That's great, thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Alright, thank you. Uh, other administrators have, who wants to start, anybody?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, alright.
I'll be, I can agree.
Alright.
Um, speaking of staff, we just actually hired recently the wind soccer coach, so I don't know if we, I don't think we said anything about that, so. Uh, Andy Kaden, that's her, she's a college player and so we're excited to bring her in, excited to bring her in, so we hired her.
She was there?
She's from, she went to the Delta, I think she was serving there, it serves early here, so.
She lives in the district now?
She's been in the district now, yes, so, yep, so excited to have her on board, um, yeah, it feels looking better, like, uh, and excited, and we're excited about that. Athletics on way, on the way and actually started on, say, pretty good from things like, you know, last year, so it looks like the coach is doing well so far and yeah, we'll see how things go, first day was smooth sailing and we're excited to, yeah, excited to kind of get to the school year role now, so, yep.
Thank you. Any other administrator? It's just been a long day, one. Message received. Uh, non-consent agenda, item A, new resource officer agreed. We have a motion or?
Table.
We have a motion on the table, support, any discussion?
Uh, I did attend, uh, the city council meeting with Andy, where he did address the city council. So we, we did reach out, I think there's just some, there was some communication, we're not sure where that is, but by taking away this, I think maybe we can get it passed, just communication, I hope.
I'm going to agree with that, I mean, this has been something I think we are working on today, you know, as far as negotiating and getting kid numbers. So I, I'm comfortable with where we're at now, uh, obviously we have a, a motion and we will, this, now this is, this is, we're talking, it's the high school part.
Uh, this, this does affect, it affects everything because this is the contract with the sheriff holistically. So, so what we're, what we're looking at is, and I don't disagree, it's, it'd be great to have our local officers in here, but regardless, we still need a sheriff down at Linwood. So you're looking at two contracts as opposed to one, the two contracts to do the forty hours and then extend the sheriff is, would be a hundred thousand, eighty-five in the city with the numbers and then I think it was fifteen thousand for the sheriff down at Linwood. So you're looking at a total of a hundred thousand for that, whereas we're covering them both. And there's, I guess, less numbers because there's no cross-over. You're looking at seventy-four thousand, five hundred, so this is a twenty-five thousand dollar savings between the two, it's a lot of money, um, but again.
But less time though.
Yeah, you could see whatever time, they're split, yeah.
See, I, originally I, I thought it was they were going to have some of your forty and then they had something else that would go through their dollars, so.
So it's a matter of, you know, making that work and whatever the pleasure is.
We almost have a lot of two issues here, we have the issue of how many hours do we expect to have, uh, officer in ability?
Mm-hmm.
And then I got a question, is which department prefer to go with?
Yeah.
So I mean, you're going to have a whole second, you have those two issues. I think Andy probably needs some direction to make sure that the board is in agreement that we want the bell to bell officer, which is a change from what we ordered to pass. Has he been pursuing the bell to bell officer?
We did a while ago, it was quite a while, it was probably maybe fifteen, twenty years ago, depending on before you write that we had. And then we have a, we did have a few that were bell to bell.
Okay, that's just something you need to consider, but make sure Andy has a good solid direction here.
And just understand that when we delay this, now we're not going to have the officer in the school here.
Well, we have.
So we're here. We're on a contract, appreciate that, just.
Well, we do have one in Linwood, that contract, so.
We do have, that was approved, the Linwood contract, now this one would, it would take care of that one, but as a break now, we should still have that one, yes.
Alright, any other discussion on this motion?
Does anybody remember what the cost was or didn't we even discuss it? If we went with the city for Penny County and then got outside service for Linwood?
Last year?
Right.
So the offer, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, it's forty-five thousand for twenty hours. Where last year we paid twenty-five, twenty-five?
Okay.
And then to do a full time city was eighty-five thousand for the forty.
And then, it's like, did it say seventy-two?
Seventy-two, okay. Okay, so, now, I, I give, we definitely need to get something in writing, we have it in writing from the sheriff. And any further discussion? Roll call vote please on that.
And we're voting to. And we're voting to table the school resource officer at this time. Yarris?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Betafer?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Oldstein?
Yes.
Ravish?
Yes.
Kucher?
No.
Six one. Motion carries? B and I consent agenda? Is.
Make a motion to accept the resignation, Chris, as our district director.
We have a motion?
We want to have support.
We want to have support. And assuming we have discussion on the matter, Mr. Betafer, so.
No discussion.
He just wanted to make the form.
I will have, I guess, I'd like to have plenty of discussion, but. Chris, I, you know, I talked to you on the phone and thank you for your service. Uh, I think your personality was a great fit for our district and your professionalism is unquestionable. So you made us better and I appreciate you for that. And I hate to see you go, but I wish you and your family the best, because this is the decision that you think is best for them.
May I?
That's what we need, yes.
We're willing to do, 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 do. Sure as possible, because I've got that person. But I agree that the support that you guys have given me has been tremendous. I have been able to be at conferences and say, my board supports me. That's not true of everyone. And because of that, we've been able to work with a team that extended through our unions. They have always worked well with us. And in the way I am today, it was us being the best, so thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I have a question.
Alright. Yarris?
Yeah.
Anderson? Betafer?
No.
Doobie?
Yeah.
Oldstein?
Yes.
Ravish?
No.
Kucher?
Unfortunately, yes.
Motion carries, thanks here. Public comments, anybody like to address the board? Any item outside the agenda or on? Okay. Special item from the board?
We're gonna have a, uh, a budget meeting this week to go over some stuff before she leaves, so we can get it on and, uh, going.
Alright. We resigned to the she now. Any other discussion items? Take a motion to adjourn?
Same.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All's. Motion carries, now adjourned.